Good. Good evening, welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for September thirteenth. Please join me in the pledge to apply. For those in the audience, just a quick update that we have a new microphone and camera system that's here. So any talking will be picked up inside of the building and then you'll find yourself up on the screen. So unless you don't want to be there. Announcements, our honeybee festival is September twenty fourth. Our fall cleanup is Saturday, October first from ten AM to two PM. Annual logging days is Saturday, October fifteenth. The Tuscan U Halloween events are October twenty second and that will be up at Ford Delaware. The Narisburg Water and Sewer continues to look for Narisburg Water and Sewer Training and Operator. Our Little Lake Erie Culver bids are out. Any reminder that on the seventeenth and eighteenth of October, water will, uh, the water department will be flushing the hydrants from six AM to twelve PM.
October?
That's what they had, yes. I have one correspondence that is not listed there from Star Hess. To the town of Tustin Supervisor, the town clerk from the town council referenced the costing discrepancies in ADA compliance in the Main Street Toilet Unit. I have questions regarding the cost and quality of the rental toilet unit on Main Street in Narisburg. Across comparison of two bids for the ADA toilet rental shows a large disparity in terms between company one that was awarded the job and company two that both go ahead bid for the job. In town resolution number one zero three of twenty twenty-two, council members chose to go with company number one to rent an ADA restroom for three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, which includes a weekly cleaning. All additional cleaning is done on request for an additional fee rental of ADA restroom from July one to September twenty-fourth. Three verbal quotes were obtained by comparing the two companies, the difference in pricing and quality of two rental units was obvious and striking. Companies number one offered a commercial ADA unit that does not appear to comply with many ADA requirements. There are no handicap records on the unit, nor any written in braille. There are no grab bars inside the toilet or on the door, making it difficult, if not impossible, to enter the toilet in a wheelchair, transfer from the chair to the toilet and then back again to exit. There is no lighting for nighttime use of the toilet, no hand sanitizer option was available at any price. And their original bid company one stated that one additional weekly cleaning would cost a hundred and twenty-five dollars for two units, yet in their July and August bills, weekly cleaning charged to town a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week for one extra cleaning of only one unit, a rough calculation for the July one through September twenty-four shows company one's ADA unit plus eleven weeks of cleaning at a hundred and twenty-five dollar a week comes to about two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars total. In comparison, company number two offered a fully compliant ADA unit at two hundred dollars a month with a hand sanitizing option, an extra fifteen dollars and a seventy-five dollar delivery fee. Total estimated charge for the three months, July through September was six hundred and ninety dollars due to differences in building practices between the two companies, calculations of the total rental charges for each might be slightly off, but they are substantially correct. I believe the council has fiduciary responsibility to go with company number two significantly less expensive and better quality ADA compliant toilet. This choice would have saved the town one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars in overall rental costs while providing a better unit and service for the town. I asked the town council to address these issues. At the September thirteenth meeting, I am attaching an example of the property of fifty D. Portable toilet for comparison. Thank you for reporting back on these concerns. That is our only correspondence. Our payment of bills. General expended seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, highway a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Water fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Sewer thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-one cents, lighting district eight hundred and nine dollars and thirty-six cents. For a total of two hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents. Um, highway, we're still in the paving and sand season, so that's the reason for the higher charges there. I spoke with Jane, she gone over the bills, she had no question, Bruce, she had no question. A motion to accept and pay the bills is presented. So, second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. For the Upper Delaware Council submitted by Evan Padua. Water, Water Everywhere is a two-day conference put on by the Friends of the Upper Delaware, covering updates on river-specific topics. It will be a total of about six hours over two days. It's a Zoom conference, thirty-dollar registration fee. The National Park Service will be introducing a new NPS Upper Delaware Acting Superintendent, Kara Deutsch, she will begin her role on nine twenty-five for a hundred and twenty-day assignment. Kara will close out UDC's Town of Tustin zoning and subdivision law amendment review project based on the NPS eight thirty-one determination of substantial performance. Provide the related tag completion project, form for project review committee chair Larry Richardson for his signature, then submit it to the bookkeeper for payment for the forty-seven-hundred-dollar reimbursement on the nine twenty-seven contract. The Narisburg D E C River Access Site recorded twelve thousand four hundred and twelve visitors on the traffic counter. Ten Mile River Access recorded seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five visits on your traffic counter. The other reports are online for highway building, water and sewer and the assessor.
The traffic count, was it just a park ranger with a little clicker?
No, they actually have a under, under this round, huh? A drive over. Uh, Energy Committee, Brandy.
Um, by the way, it looks and sounds much better, like remarkably. So, um, soft plastic, the T E C has received its seventh bench, uh, it's going to Pete's Market tomorrow. Um, Pete contributes to our soft plastic recycling with internal collection as well as drop-off box in the lobby for residents, amounting to approximately one half of what we collect. Um, Trex has also sent Tustin three new durable boxes to be placed around town this week. I placed two of them. Um, the T E C has collected and recycled twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-seven pounds over eleven tons to date. LED streetlights, NICEG is still holding up the final installation of the Main Street LED, uh, LED pens and lights. The streetlights in town's Main Street parking lot and a short list of lights around the town outside Narisburg. I've emailed NIPA and NICEG numerous times and they are inching forward. And the T E C asks our supervisor to follow up with NICEG again if possible. Ben?
I can, NICEG gave the approval. They said they have the engineer's approval that they sent to the NIPA.
Yeah, I know. Then they were at one last obstacle. I don't know. Um, I mean, I'll keep trying, but if you could, I think that would help. Um, trash, town trash, uh, recycling receptacles, the town ordered outdoor heavy-duty plastic trash and recycling receptacles, but the sticker labels curled up from the sun rendering, rendering them unreadable. And the town was supposed to buy new stickers. I don't know about that either, how that worked.
They sent an email on that. They were ordered the day they requested them and they were in that same week. They're, I don't know that Tim has put them out, so.
Okay, that's far now, yeah. So I didn't know. Okay. I didn't know if you wanted the T E C to put them out. Someone else can do it. That's great. Um, all right. So the future of the Tuscan horse, uh, this is a correspondence, uh, the T E C sent to the town board on August twenty-ninth. To the Tuscan Town Board, in twenty eighteen, the Tuscan Energy Committee looked closely at the issue of food waste. Forty percent of all food is wasted in the United States. That statistic was a motivating factor in looking to get a food digester for our town. After applying for a fully funded grant for a town food scrap digester, the New York State, the D E C awarded the T E C a hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred dollars to purchase Impact Bioenergy's horse. Um, to reduce food waste, produce nutrient-rich probiotic, plant food and biogas. Since the horse was installed outdoors at the town highway born in twenty twenty-one, several Tuscan food merchants have contributed their food scraps to this recycling effort. The plant food, the horse has produced is called second helping to a plant food solution and has proven to be a valuable product for growing healthy vegetables and plants. And after almost a year of testing, the plant food, NOFA, New York has approved and listed the product for use by certified organic producers. However, um, as we worked with the digester, certain aspects of its operation became clear. In order to exploit its full potential, a setting with more available funding would allow for hiring a full-time operator along with greater investment in the machine itself, thereby allowing for greater output of energy along with increased production of liquid fertilizer. The T E C has consulted with Growing Soul, a Sullivan County nonprofit, which addresses food waste and recovery and is now partnering with Sullivan County's efforts to feed those in need. Part of that equation is food scrap recovery and food production for our county, which consistently ranks as one of the least healthy in the state. Um, this group sees the value of the Tuscan horse and has shown great interest in partnering in operational support. Jessica Weiss, Executive Director of Growing Soul, has analyzed our technical needs and has spoken with the impact engineers directly, the designers of the horse. Her review of the ongoing issue suggests that they could be modified by impact, but its operations would still benefit from a full-time operator rather than a volunteer with limited time. Fortunately, a possible solution has presented itself. Growing Soul is currently partnering with Cornell Cooperative Extension in the Sullivan County Zero Waste Food Security Project to create a sustainable, regenerative, self-energized, integrated food security pilot house at the Cornell Cooperative Extension uh, site in Liberty, New York. Um, they are interested in making the Tuscan horse a key part of the system. The center will include a kitchen garden for food production run by the Horticultural Program at C C E. The Catskills Kitchen, a commercial kitchen incubator where Growing Soul will lead food recovery and food processing. The community cupboard to lead food distribution for residents in need. On-site composting and anaerobic digestion, digestion, uh, leveraging the Tuscan horse for food processing, uh, for, for processing food scraps and producing second helping to plant food solution as well as clean energy. The sensor would expand use of the Tuscan horse in an integrated system, processing organics in a sustainable manner and produce plant food. The adjacent garden location will demonstrate the full cycle of the plant food product use. The horse would also be upgraded to power itself and/or charge any EV transport vehicles. A job for a trained operator would be part of the solution. In terms of Tustin's investment in the horse, the project never crossed the town anything because it was fully funded by the New York State D E C and supported by the volunteers of the T E C. The only money spent came from T E C funds to produce, I'm sorry, to print informational flyers. And for the last few years, the T E C has educated Tuscan food merchants and the public about the importance of composting food scraps rather than bringing food waste to the landfill. Creating organic plant food that grows healthier vegetables is on, is the way of the future and feeding those in need in the county is an honorable goal. Support for our efforts has been international as we continue to inspire municipalities, schools, businesses and farmers. In summation, the horse would be product, uh, productively, more productively utilized as part of a bigger system with a paid operator who has professional experience. We, we conclude that the horse is a small business when, with unemployment opportunity for a trained operator. Growing Soul's executive director is currently negotiating with Impact Makers of the Horse to fix the inherent issues. Although we did our due diligence, it was only after the digester was operational that these became clear. Therefore, after much deliberation, the T E C is recommending the relocation of the Tuscan horse to the food system at Cornell Cooperative Extension in Liberty to serve the county's food outreach, outreach goals. There will be no cost to Tustin for this relocation. We asked the town, Tuscan, the Tuscan Town Board to pass a resolution as per this request. As a sincere thank you for their support, Tuscan residents and participating food merchants will be offered the rest of the plant food we produced at the horse for free on a scheduled day in October. We will fill buckets with lids with second helping to plant food solution. And I had asked the town boards to respond to me. And then now there's something that came up after this email and I'm going to hand that over to Jennifer Porter who needs to be unmuted and she's going to do that for it.
Thank you. Thanks, Brandy. Hi, everybody. I'm Jennifer Porter, also a member of the T E C. And I, the, the second correspondence Brandy sent on Saturday, uh, the tenth is the one I'm going to cover here, which was that since we sent you that horse update, the Brandy just read.
Feedback on your end because you're echoing.
Okay. I'm echoing now. Still echoing? Yes.
Where is she on the screen? There's no, no.
Sure.
Brandy, do you want to take over on that?
I mean, Jen, you think you can get that together?
Can you, can you mute, maybe it's because we're both unmuted?
Oh, yeah, mute me.
Is that better?
No.
Right?
Okay. Okay. If you, I mean, if you want, I can read it and then, um. Should I proceed or not?
Go ahead, Brandy.
Okay. And then Jen's going to answer any questions about the grant, so I'll just read it. Um, since we sent you the horse, the horse update, a great opportunity has presented itself to the town of Tustin. New York State D E C reached out to the T E C to let us know that the town of Tustin is now eligible for a continuation food digester grant of up to two hundred thousand dollars. The grant could be used for upgrades to the horse, getting a, including getting a larger grinder, operation costs to the nonprofit Growing Soul, transport of the horse that we've outlined to Cornell Cooperative Extension in Liberty, adjacent to Bosse's, as well as associated support costs of um, Cornell Cooperative Extension. Bottom line, this grant would speed up the horse ownership transfer that we proposed. This wouldn't cost the town any money and T E C member Jennifer Porter would apply for the grant. Um, if awarded, Jennifer would manage the paperwork for the length of that grant period. The deadline to pass the resolution to apply for this grant is tonight, at the meeting tonight, uh, since the grant will be expended if we don't get the application by next Thursday, we expect. So in addition, we're losing to the transfer of ownership of the horse, we request a motion to allow the T E C to apply for a state continuation grant called Municipal Food Scraps Recycling Initiatives twenty twenty-one. And that's that email. And so Ben, that's, that's the report. If you want to ask Jen any questions about the, the grant, you guys could do that.
Not at this point. We've got that, I believe, under new business.
Oh, I, I haven't seen the agenda. Is that on the website yet?
We look at it under the new business five point five.
I, I don't see an agenda, that's all. Um. Okay.
Jane, with zoning revisions?
Oh, okay. Let me take one. Yeah.
Okay. The committee has completed the goal stated in our, uh, Upper Delaware Council Tag Grant. The final report was submitted on time. We received comments from the D E C with regards to local law number one. And we will address these at our next meeting and that's a meeting of the zoning update committee. We will continue to meet to complete the revision process. Our goal is to have only one document which encompasses all zoning regulations. This one document will be available on our website. Do you want to add anything to that, Jane?
Um, no, I'll do the grants.
Okay.
Okay, grants report, U D C, the final, uh, report for zoning updates was submitted on time and approved, I heard today. And so we just await the payment. Um, we also, I submitted a two thousand twenty-three tag round application for the integration of all zoning documents and the placement on our website. Um, so there, that's where I was. If anybody wonders why I left, I had to go defend our application across the street. Um, yeah, um, yes, we'll see what happens there. The Bridge, New York Culvert Project, the bids have been advertised, uh, for the, and, uh, they will be open to October sixth at eleven AM. So that's exciting and hopefully we will move on that. The Sullivan Renaissance Municipal Partnership Grant for Kirk Road, that project's been completed and the final paperwork was submitted on time. Water and Sewer Committee? Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
Any questions on grants?
Seven, no.
Water Sewer Committee met on September sixth, uh, we agreed that our cap was, uh, an organization that has been helping us throughout the whole water, um, upgrade system. Uh, they also help rural communities with sewer work. And so they are going to do an evaluation of our current sewer rates and, um, but this information is not expected to be completed until early next year. Only one applicant has applied for the vacant position in the Water Sewer Department. Dave Bunzel interviewed the applicant and the position will be reposted on our website. If anybody knows anybody that's interested in the job in the Water Sewer uh, department. And that, I think, is it, anything I missed on the Water Sewer?
I'm just, uh, just if we did, and if we know what the status of the, the water, you know, tank town.
Well, I, I didn't call him, but I was pretty sure that he went ahead and ordered the, 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 um, the cement one. But I didn't.
Right, we will wait on these dates, right?
That's it.
Okay. I will open the floor for ten minutes to public comment. I will start with the floor live and then move to Zoom. Yes, start.
I can speak from here and I can hear me.
You're probably going to have to still come at least to the podium so that the microphone will make you out.
Okay, um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Uh, first is, uh, why was my correspondence not on the agenda? They usually put, if you have correspondence into category, I'm just pledging not since presentations, et cetera. And I was just wondering why that wasn't done.
That would be, as I stated in the beginning, I forgot to put it on the correspondence, but I still read it.
Okay. And then, um, just as an answer to my questions in the letter, will there be any response from the board as to why they went with the much more expensive unit with less amenities and not ADA certified?
There'll be no response from the board other than what they passed at the resolution at the meeting that you were at, where we had the discussion on why we picked the more expensive unit because it had the availability of cleaning. The rest of it, as far as ADA compliance, is your opinion, not that of all the board members, um, and that's part of it.
Okay, then the other thing is, again, going with the company that is giving the best price. If the cost of the supposed ADA um, unit in town is more than what would have been done with the other company, uh, and since it is now demonstrable that this is not an ADA qualified unit if for no other reason than it's not placated as an ADA compliant unit with the braille underneath, then I think that the company one owes a refund of about three hundred and forty dollars for the day use of a, a unit that they're charging more for when it is not, when it's purported to be. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments on the floor? Everybody on Zoom?
No.
Working into old business. Four point one. Well, entertaining motion to adopt local law number one, a local law amending the zoning law, the subdivision law of the town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jane?
Absolutely, yes.
And I am an aye. Local law, a motion to adopt local law number two, the formation of a conservation advisory council.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion, a second.
Also.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Kevin?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Four point three, uh, ninety-three Main Street. I'm sorry.
I'm not getting done.
Oh, okay. Um, Helen, you want to leave a discussion with us on that?
Well, I, we've got it. You certainly, y'all got it, looked at it. I, I mean, there's a, we've got a couple of blanks we need to fill in what the, uh, opening date will be for that. And I think I also wanted to confirm what we're going to call as being the minimum rent that we're in this forum. Think we said was going to be. But, and I wouldn't plan on publishing this. I think produce or Crystal is much shorter, you know, notice.
I think you need, from the board at this point, would be a number, correct?
Yeah, a number, yeah, a number and a date. And then, and once you've got that, then I will get Crystal, a short notice, publish in the newspaper. They can pick up the R F P, you know, sort of like you would with a bit.
And would we have enough time if we do the R F P to do a, an opening on our next work session? Two, that would give three weeks.
We won't have enough time because you want, I mean, somebody may want to go actually look at it. They're going to need to contact either them and Crystal to get access.
Maybe we should do it so that the opening would actually be at our regular meeting in October, which would be the eleventh. Unless you think the fourth of October is enough.
Well, we can recess on the eleventh.
Correct.
Right, if we needed to do some, or. Yeah.
Right.
I guess. That gives people more time, but it doesn't really slow progress because we.
Correct, we'd still be able to do it.
Yeah. I, I think whoever makes sense.
That's our opening date, October eleventh?
We do, October eleventh is an opening date.
Six thirty PM? Or you want to do it a little bit before the meeting?
It's good to be cool. Well, we'll just put it under old business number one. Let's start at six thirty. That'll keep everybody.
Okay. And the other question was, we had discussed what we were going to use as a minimum. Rent. Twenty-seven. I got it. I had, I, I. I can't recall.
Yeah, those are printed hours ago.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven?
No, no, more than that. Forty-nine.
In six point nine. That's based on the appraisal, got, right, pulled back in. Went a little lower than that. The board, good with that number?
Sure. I can't, I mean, we have, we have something to back it up.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So. Been smart at that.
I'll move.
Okay.
Thirty-nine hundred.
So, I'm thinking, this is most important.
Out of my depth landlord and wife. Out of my depth landlord wise. Make a motion to authorize a town clerk to publish the RFP to lease ninety-three Main Street. I will make the motion. I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please.
Does it say in the, I can't remember, does it get the square footage in the, uh?
No.
No.
No, it didn't know.
I didn't put it in.
No, no, I meant in the appraisal.
I'm sure it did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We wanna start moving forward with something on the town hall?
Yes, that makes sense. I, I think we need to. Get a plan. I think we need before. Anything gets done, so.
Put the floor.
Put the floor, yes.
I'd like to.
Down the floor is gonna be done before and told that they're, they're supposed to be calling us.
Yeah, of course. We'll see if they just.
All right, we're not gonna argue.
Who wants to be in charge of? Working on that?
On, on building.
In fact.
All right, so. I'm, I'm thinking that we need. Professional advice as to how to reconfigure. The building so that the office workers have adequate space.
Should we guys sign the committee and put, uh, yourself in? Say Kevin? Together? You wanna plan to bring something to us on any next meeting? Or at the workshops?
Well, I think, I think. With all due respect to Kevin and myself, I think it's more than Kevin and myself's brain that has to go into this. Do you, or?
Right, that's what I'm, are we gonna put an RFP out for?
Well, it's a, that's professional service. Yeah, we can, uh, we can, uh, take a look. What?
Or any. Lay out a floor plan and, right, give us an idea of what the cost is gonna be, because obviously a room like this is gonna be a little different than.
We can get three votes or something like that, just so that it isn't awkward. Or we can just.
Come up with a plan first.
Well, but that's what the, you know, the professionals understand. A clerk needs this much space and the system.
Plan before you put it out on the floor, right?
Yeah, but I'm, we're talking about just to.
Okay.
Get the, yeah. All right, so you're putting Kevin and myself in charge.
I think that's a good.
Okay. Yeah.
The bucket, bucket of next, uh, work session, we've been. We can formulate how we wanna go for the next meeting.
Okay.
To move forward.
Okay.
Any other old business that we missed?
Uh, five point one, our new business, we need to reappoint Karen Valente to the, uh, Board of Assessment Review. With a five-year term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, I moved that we reappoint Karen Valente.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Uh, five point two budget transfers. The Derrisburg Water and Sewer Clerk and Deputy Town Clerk's one and two.
Sorry, it's just not natural, we're sewer clerk, only deputy clerks. Sorry.
Uh, motion authorize a budget transfer, uh, five thousand dollars from A fourteen one oh one point two. To A fourteen one oh one point three. So we're just pointing from one deputy clerk's line to the other deputy clerk's line.
It's backwards. It's going from second deputy clerk to first, my apologies.
Oh, wow.
We can keep that on our.
I know.
I'll make a motion to, you know, do that as a reminder.
Thank you.
I will second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Uh, five point three, we need to create a new line, A nine seven five zero point six. Uh, principal payment line and also A nine seven five zero point seven, a note interest payment line. And these are for the note on ninety-three Main Street. Um, and then we would budget transfer. Following sixteen thousand from A sixteen two zero point four. To A ninety-seven fifty point six, which is a note principal. Twenty-four hundred from A sixteen twenty point four to A ninety-seven fifty point seven, the note interest. And the sixteen twenty point four is the building funding.
So this is just straightening things.
Well, keeping.
Yeah, okay. Uh, do you need, you need a motion?
I would like a motion.
I will move that.
I will second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Uh, author, authorize the sewer and water superintendent to bid for sand. He had gotten three votes on it, but due to the procurement policy, it needs to be put out to bid. So I would make a motion authorize an air for order of sewer departments solicit for bids for filter sand. Town of Tustin would accept these bids on the form provided for filter sand at two ten Bridge Street, Derrisburg, New York, and bids will be accepted by the town for. Until October tenth, twenty twenty-two, at noon.
Okay, I will make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? You wanna unmute, friend, Ian?
They have the.
Okay. Five point five is the force. Um, I think before we get too far in the conversation about the force. My conversations with the attorney for the town. Are that we don't have enough information at this point on whether we can divest ourselves of this unit. Meeting.
I, I, I haven't had a chance, I gotta read that grant. Agreement when it was first funded, to make sure there's nothing there impacting down those that. Anything could include us from doing that.
Even if the grant is not in effect, sometimes there's, I mean, the grant is, was over as of June.
I, I see grants that put like lifetime limits on your ability, that, you know, like, if you get money to acquire a piece of property.
Okay.
They, they'll, especially if it's a federal grant, they.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Yeah. So I'd wa, I just wouldn't want you to run afoul of, and then we get into a. I'll look at that as quick as I can, but just heard about this this weekend and it wasn't that time.
Could this new grant also have similarly?
Well, I'd be concerned about that too, uh, you know, you're, so, two hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't think you'd wanna be applying for a grant without at least disclosing to them that you're in. Process of contemplating divesting yourself of the entire. Facility.
I don't think they were going to vote the two hundred thousand, my understanding was, was much less, but I could be wrong.
Regardless of the amount, but same issue, you know?
Well, I did speak with, um, Jen on the phone and. I, you know, I wasn't, I didn't know about that. Sometimes these grants say you have to hold on to it for life. I was under the impression that. We own it, we can do what we want, but I, I said that, um. I thought that they should apply for the grant for, um, the new part that is needed to upgrade it, um, the move. And so the report says right in the.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna apply for it, you better disclose what you're contemplating doing.
And the legal fees.
Well. Um. Yeah, Jen?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You can, you sound fabulous.
Oh, look at that, sorry about that before. Yeah, the, the, in terms of DC, the, the original grant is ended and they actually. Approached us saying that this was available, um, as an expansion grant, and so, yeah, that, the whole. They are, you know, aware of the fact of that being moved, it's staying in the county, and from their perspective, that was. Not an issue, it's part of the, the plan and the expansion.
Who did the fir, did the first grant come from them?
Yeah, same department.
Does this grant that you're, wanna apply for now have to have any matching funds from the town?
It doesn't have to have matching from the town, we have plenty of match from Cornell Corporate or Extension lined up, and. As Jane said, the maximum is two hundred thousand, we, we, we know they still do have dollars left, we're not. Sure how much the town would be eligible for, but. We have, the town won't, doesn't have to put the match, cuz there's plenty of match from the Cornell, uh, side.
How is that? What, what would they be matching?
They're matching space, uh, staff time. Uh, there's a number of things, the use of the, um, just looking it up. Use of the, um, kitchen there, the office space rental.
See, I could.
Supplies.
How that.
They be a co-app?
There is.
Yeah, they are a co-app.
There is an area where the town can be, we, we asked them to go with a nonprofit, but. You know, we got this Saturday. They're, you know, they're asking us to make decisions on something that we don't know what the ramifications are. Um, the grant runs through twenty twenty-three, I believe, um. That's fine if they wanna divest it. But I think the board has to make sure that we can divest it in a way that we're not.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if they've expressed that they don't have a problem with us divesting at DC, which was the grant, the original grant. Can we get something from that, or do you have something from them in writing? Will they confirm that? Even if it's an email?
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, we could get confirmation again. The second motion is the request to just, to be able to apply for it, but we could get. DC to say that they've, they've said that, that's part of the, what we've explained would be the application.
Personal, yeah, I, I don't see a problem with them applying for it.
Because we. Right.
Right. What? You know, I think we would need. Board approval to accept it.
Right. Right, that.
Board's got no control over what's going on, and, and if we don't get what we need. Then we have to be able to say, okay, you applied, you got it, we don't want it.
Yes, that you could definitely do.
But. When is the deadline for the application?
It's, it's just that it's dwindling, the dollars are dwindling, we have, uh, we have a goal to get it in as soon as possible. Uh, would have, really, cuz we don't. Sorry?
I, I understand it's a goal to get it in, but if.
It's a, it's, so, yeah, it's, it basically, if we don't get it in this week to next week, midweek, we're not gonna be, there's not gonna be dollars left. For it, this is just, again, the application to be eligible.
Telling the board that. The deadlines today, when actually it goes into twenty twenty-three, and the real reason is we wanna have a resolution so that they don't run out of funding. I mean, that, I don't think that was very fair.
Okay, we, we, well, yeah, I guess you could say it's. Still open, but the dollars won't be available.
I, I think that would have been a better way to present it to the board if two days ago, and I'm not blaming you for that.
Right, right, I understand. Yeah, and again, you could definitely, we, one, one way to think about the. Idea of applying is, like you said, we can still, the town could still say no. Cuz again, as Jane said, we don't know how much would be awarded.
So I guess, um, there, there's no harm in allowing, um, them to. Um, I would like to see the, the written application before you submit.
Jane is, is our grant.
Sure, Jane, yeah, that'd be, that'd be fun.
Oh. As our grant Yoda, I have a question. This is. But. Does, we're getting a grant for, for something we're gonna divest ourselves from. Is there perception sometimes that towns get, are getting to in the grants, and I just worry that we may. Reclude, be precluded from getting future grants for future projects. Because we're getting a grant for something that, that basically.
I don't think so.
But.
No.
Confident that that's.
No, I don't think so, and the only thing that's, that you would run into is if you were applying for state. Funding for the same kind of thing.
Okay.
Then, yeah.
I just wanted to avoid the perception that we were being greedy.
Yeah.
That was, getting this two years from now, and we want something for a kid's park, they're gonna say, hey, you got that.
Yeah, no, there's so many different offices, I don't even think one of those would be the other.
All right, that's good, right? I think the thing that's. As far as getting tenant involved to make sure that the board got the file approved this. Because in the master contract for the grants, it's gonna say in there what the grant. Life is, and if. If you try to divest it during that grant life, it's gonna require probably some written authorization from.
Right.
Unless you're writing the grant for divesting.
Right.
Uh, that, that's what I said, you're, if you write the grant to say that you want moving costs and legal fees to. Send it over to, um, cooperative extension, then it's perfectly clear what you're doing.
Right. Uh huh.
It's just, and I'm still unclear, well, that's why I would like to read it, the twenty-five percent match that. Bruce brought up. Um, I'm still not clear how that's going to happen. Um, you say that cooperative extension and blah, 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 but.
I'll, yeah.
We're divesting it to them, I don't wanna be responsible for the operations.
Right, and I, I think. Uh huh.
I guess I just have to read it, and maybe it'll.
Yeah, yeah, um, I will. Definitely, we can definitely do that, Jane.
That makes sense.
You know, we don't wanna be on the hook for the.
No, but, but, then, they're saying that Cornell will probably provide some kind, not as bad.
It's in kind, yes, in fact, we previously had match on the grant that we have, and they wouldn't. They couldn't be cash, it was in kind time of the committee, et cetera, so it's same with this.
But it's a real plus that they reached out to, want to.
Yeah.
To the Energy Committee, and I mean, that's, that's something to be proud of, that they know that are work, though, or your work.
Yeah, well, the towns.
A good thing.
Jane, I defer to your judgment on.
So what is my, from this, a motion that they can, uh, proceed with an application?
Yeah, either a resolution or a.
The motion becomes the. Yeah. So I move that the Tustin Energy Committee, uh, proceed with an application to the DC, is it? Um.
Yes.
Uh, we're, related to the boards.
All second. Discussion?
I guess I wanna amend that to say that. They, no, leave it like that. I know Jennifer will let us do it.
Yeah. All in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed?
Okay.
Well, can't wait there. Uh, five point six, I have a, the highway superintendent based on some residences for. Uh, a request for the county to petition a state. Who established lower speed limits, uh, the first. Would be a motion for the town of Tustin Board to request the county of Sullivan to petition the State of New York Department of Transportation. Who established a lower speed limit on Swamp Pond Road, Town Road number twenty, from County Route twenty-three to the town of Peshawetan Town Line. I will put that in the form of a motion, a second?
It's a town road, you have to.
Yes, it's through the state, state. We know what the lowest speed limit is.
It would be set by the state.
Okay, yes, it would, anything we can ask, but they determine.
Yeah. They actually, they're putting traffic counter out there, and. But they've got, they've got the jurisdiction.
You had a motion?
I have a motion.
Second? All second, uh, discussion?
Are we asking the state to lower it, or are we asking the state to do the investigation, or that?
They, they will do the investigation and make the determination of what the speed should be, if. At all times, any unposted road in the state is automatically fifty-five miles per hour.
Oh.
Section eleven eighty B of vehicle traffic.
Well, that.
So we've been told. All in favor? Uh, I oppose. Uh, the second motion would be for the town of Tustin Town Board to request the County of Sullivan. To petition the State of New York Department of Transportation to establish a lower speed limit. On Lackawaxen Road, Town Road number forty, from State Route ninety-seven to the town of Highland Line.
I will, um, I will make that motion.
Second? I will second, discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
That's been a scene of. But that, that's been a scene of some.
Uh, Swamp Pond, there's been a lot of. Action according. action according to the Highway Superintendent. Uh, five point seven, a motion authorized a highway superintendent to auction off a two thousand and six Chevy dump with a VIN number ending in seven, five, eight, seven, and a two thousand and six international dump with a VIN ending in seven, one, one, six. So moved. A second discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Five point eight, a motion authorized supervisor justice court clerk apply for a J C A P grant. These are the grants that are funded by the state for the purposes of updating the courts. And some of those can be used in common areas.
Um, will you consult with Kevin and myself?
Maybe it's all around an official meeting.
Oh, well, just send us something.
We can do that. I would make the motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I oppose.
Uh, in there for water and sewer and R C A. This would be a motion authorized the Narasburg Water and Sewer Committee and the District to work with R C A with the purpose of formulating sewer rates.
Yes, for relating appropriate sewer rates. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Now, that doesn't plus this anything. R C A does everything free.
Now, it's going to be up in the discussion. We're going to ask you that.
Yeah.
Uh, watering on Kirk Road.
Oh, yes. So we all have not forgotten the drought that we've just been through, I'm sure, even though it's rained for days. But during that drought, the trees were planted on Kirk Road, and they needed to be watered. And so the landscaper went to one of the business owners, one of the merchants, and used that water. And so I would just like to be able to reimburse the merchants in whatever they need.
Just enter into the contract with the merchant. Is that where parks should recreate?
Sure, it's even, no, 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 it's not necessary to be in a contract because I don't think we're going to need any money, any order at this point. But he said, once it's the the fall comes, they'll go dourner. And then next year, you won't need to water them. Somebody's knowing what I'm talking about after they're missing. So, yeah, it's just this one time just to pay the merchant for water.
That's it. He has an idea of how many gallons you.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask.
Okay.
So we just need a voucher.
We don't need a motion, you can.
I thought so.
Is there any other new business?
Just for the order. You have the invoice and then the voucher. Okay.
Any other new business we missed?
Any other new business?
If not, I will open the floor here first and then to Zoom for public comments. Mr. Farrell, you know.
Thank you very much. Since we've not seen the request for proposal on the bank building, ninety-three Main Street, just a couple of points of clarification. I assume that the twenty-nine hundred dollars is a starting point for a potential auction.
Yes.
It'll go to the highest offer for rental. And I have to assume that the town will also expect substantial security deposits to ensure the financial integrity of the potential tenant.
That will all come out in the year or R F P.
Well, they'll put in the R F P, and then they'll then we'll negotiate the at the form of the lease. I promise you, Mike, I will put a security deposit requirement in the form of the lease. I wouldn't.
But would there be any additional requirements for financial disclosure on the part of the tenant? I mean, the point is, we want to make sure somebody goes.
I didn't, I didn't put provisions in the that that said that they should provide us with documentation showing that they have the financial wherewithal to perform the lease.
That ought to cover it.
How's that?
And I thank you for your time.
And this, the R F P, anybody is available for the public.
Absolutely.
At any time, if you want to get a copy.
Right, but at this point, it came up in discussion here.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Danielle Tito. So I have.
Hi.
I have a question actually about that R F P, too. I I guess I I'm not used to this. I'm actually in commercial real estate, but in an institutional level. So when you say an R F P, are you putting out an R F P to get a broker to leasing? Or is it an R F P that is the rental offer? I just wasn't sure.
We're we're soliciting proposals from prospective tenants.
Okay, so it's the direct.
So.
So you don't use a broker?
We're not gonna, no, that's the, no, we're not using a broker.
Okay.
Now, if a broker wants to, the broker wants to produce or procure a prospective tenant, they should make an arrangement with that tenant to be compensated because the town.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah.
So if they want engaged services of a broker to help them.
Gotcha.
It's America. They should feel free to do that.
Absolutely. Um, and then I guess you mentioned the highest bid, but, you know, you could have a great potential tenant. It's it's Main Street after all, so it's not necess- you know, if if a crappy business wants to offer you twenty-nine hundred and a great business wants to offer you twenty-eight, you know, I guess, it's not just.
We'll, we'll cross, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I think when you see the the R F P, you'll see them.
Oh, you specify. So I guess that that brings up something else, which is somebody asked about the agenda being online. And I looked online like maybe an hour before I came, and I wasn't even sure if there was going to be a meeting because there was no agenda. So, you know, and is that typical or typically there an agenda?
We've been getting the agenda typically up online. We just, as a lot of people will notice, they're familiar with old website. We just.
I noticed it looked different.
Yes, we just got a new website air. There's a little few little tanks in it.
Yeah.
Um, so some things, we tried to publish it, and it was published right away. We're we're working through that, so bear with me the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, but yes.
Because in particular, you know, I come here and I'm still coming here relatively, you know, freshly. I haven't been coming here for years. So, you know, knowing what was on the agenda, then I could look at local, long, look, look, so I could really be prepared with comments and questions if I if I had them. Um, my other question was about this horse, which is terrific. I mean, I wish I knew about it before. Um, but I'm wondering if we're giving it to Liberty, why isn't Liberty applying for this grant that we're applying for?
It's a municipal grant. It it only goes to municipalities.
So Liberty's not a municipal.
It's not. Going to Cornell. They're going to a not-for-profit.
It's not the town of Liberty.
Oh, it's just in Liberty.
Exactly. Cornell Cooperative is located physically.
Gotcha. All right. Um, I guess my final question to the board is, again, I don't really know you guys. And it would be great if 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 you would introduce yourselves maybe at the start of the meeting so that newbies kind of knew who you were and are. And I I guess you're the attorney.
That's right.
But I, you know, I just think for for anybody who's new, it might be nice to just, you know, hearing.
It was a brief discussion about getting, um.
Name, yeah, name to, name horses.
Next, are we do shirts?
Uh, you know what? I'll embroider it for you.
With numbers inside. The town emblem on one breast.
I'm going to walk back into business and hold public comment for a minute. Jane was talking about another.
Why don't you just say who you are? I'm Jane Luxinger, Deputy Supervisor. Nice to have you here. Thank you for coming.
I'm going to walk back into business for a minute. Jane's looking to apply for a grant through Sullivan County.
Right, we're working with Tustin U. And the the anyway, we're pavilion on the down on the flats on the playground, which is part of the multi-generational park plan.
Walkway to nowhere.
And and the grant. The grant is from Sullivan County itself.
Sullivan County has a grant out there. A million people are applying for it, so it's very competitive. I don't know if we'll get anything, but if you don't apply, you don't prepare them. Yeah. It's for youth, seniors, things that'll last for a long time, right?
What for programming?
Anyway.
Motion you're making to watch a grant.
I would like to make a motion to apply for a grant to the county for pavilion on the flats.
Discussion, all in favor or? I?
I.
I.
I am back into public comments.
Okay.
On Zoom.
Mr. Ritter. Uh, let me see if I can get this to work. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, excellent. All right. Well, thank, thank you. Um, yeah, I I got a question regarding the R F P. Is that going to be published online on your, on the town's website?
I do.
Yes.
Yes. I- is it now on online or it will?
We just, we just passed it tonight, so now it can be posted when she sends it out.
Okay. All right, so I I'm a little unclear about that. So you have an R F P going to prospective tenants. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, is it an auction process? Do you have like a minimum bid that you are going to say?
Want to read the R F P, Tony? It's got everything that, everything will be in there. Once you read it, you'll have, you'll have a clear path to where you need to go.
Right, my, 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 go ahead.
It's like requesting bids. It's 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 similar to that process where we're, we've got a request for proposal, so we're going to publicize it and invite folks to to submit a proposal to lease the property. And yes, there's a minimum amount.
There isn't, Ken, so there's a, there's a floor there. There's a minimum as far as X amount of dollars per month.
Correct.
Yes, okay. And and in that, well, I obviously the lease probably hasn't been done yet, but because the parking area goes with the bank, is there going to be some provision that whoever uh, leases that building is going to know that the parking area is going to remain a municipal lot?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Just in the building anyway, right?
Yes.
The proposal is to lease the building.
Yeah.
And we'll allow them to use the the parking lot in common with the town because it's going to remain a municipal parking lot.
Okay, okay, so you've you've answered two out of three. I'm almost done. And and I think this came up at a previous meeting because the town really wanted to purchase this property because of the parking, because of the lack of parking in the town. Has it been exhausted as far as subdividing this? I know it's going to create a substandard lot. I know that, but because it's municipal, if it was to be challenged, because it's municipal, because there's a dearth, there's a lack of parking in this town, did the board really want to become a landlord here as opposed to just selling off the building and retaining the parking which we sorely need?
That was an option of 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 multiple options that was presented to the board for its consideration before it decided to pursue it this avenue, Tony. That was.
Okay, so it it was an option, and Ken, because you are very learned. Right, but the thing is, because it's substandard and because it's municipal, let's say somebody who was sore wanted to file a seventy-eight. The town, though, if they were challenged, they would have good reason to say, look, we we need the parking, and this is why it's a substandard lot.
Oh. It's interesting. The law is not entirely clear with that because there's a distinction between whether we use, we use property for governmental purposes or or proprietary purposes. Now, the the parking lot aspect would be governmental, but the substandard lot would we would create would be for the building, which would be a proprietary exercise because we're not using it. So I'm not so sure that we we could create a substandard lot any easier than any other member of the public would, any other property owner in town could for that purpose.
So the only, the only way that that would come out is if it was challenged.
That's always the case, right?
Right, right, okay. Well, you've.
Actually, it's good action until somebody challenges it, and they either win or lose, right?
That's correct. That's correct. Right. All right, guys, thank, ladies and guys, thank, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Tony.
We didn't need.
But their signs are up.
Do you have any more comments in Zoom?
If not, I will move into board comments. I just want to say that the reaction to the Kirk Road project's been pretty universally positive. And Jane really deserves a lot of credit for getting that grant and seeing you through. You know, usually on Facebook, it's used with the vetch and worse. And everything said on that on Facebook, it's very positive.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
We have someone with their hand raised. I'm unsure of your name.
You can just identify yourself.
Hi, it's it's Jacob Johnson. Sorry, I'm working on my audio here. Um, I I just have a comment for the sorry, one second. As far as the parking at the bank, you're you've still, the town will still be the owner of the building and the lot. As such, the town can put any provision inside of a lease that says that the entire parking lot, not only shall it be used for any proposed business in the bank, but that it shall be maintained for public use as well. You're the landlord, you can do that. So I don't, I don't see a major problem with that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Board comment? Kevin, you started with Kirk Road. That was.
That's my gun.
You just beat me to it. It didn't come out nicely.
I hope everybody wants.
Nothing here, no.
Oh, that's.
The trees are too high and the fences, and they're like.
Yeah, yeah. I read something through the parking committee. I'm just saying it. It doesn't have to be in public, but if you give up one parking spot for just bicycles, that maybe more people would come to town on their bicycle rather than car. So thought, I read someplace you can get ten bicycles in one parking spot, and so it increases the capacity. Just a thought.
Yeah, maybe you get a grant for, you know, bike ride. Yeah, you build a bike ride. That that makes sense.
We have a bike ride someplace. I'm up here. It didn't get smashed.
I think the library had them. I don't know if we had any of the town itself.
Well, or the town didn't. Do we have one right at the by Tustin Cup? Is there a bike ride down there?
Used to be.
Yeah.
No.
There's one.
There's one at the playground.
Oh, there's one. Well, that one might, anyway, that's what I read someplace, so that's a thought.
Uh, meeting reminders, we have the zoning update committee will meet next Tuesday from two to four. That is also on Zoom. We have our workshop with the Town Board, which will be on the fourth of October. That will not be on Zoom. And we have our regular Town Board meeting, which will be on the eleventh of October six thirty, and that will be on Zoom. And everything else is on our new website.
And if anyone sees anything on the new website that needs to be updated, you can send us an email and we will get to it.
So I'm for your turn.
A second, all in favor? Thank you both.